All right, we will get started, roll call. Mike Langer.
Here.
Neil?
Here, sir.
Thank you. Kim?
Here.
All right, and Grant is here. John Mortensen and Juan Rivera both couldn't be here tonight, so they're excused. So with that, I will call us to order, and next step is our flag salute. Flag to come on the screen here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So this first, or second part of our agenda for public input, so if you'd like to give some input, put your name and email in the chat, and Justin will collect that and we'll call on you. So we'll open it up for about sixty seconds. Just if anybody has any public input, they'd like to add, go ahead and put your name and email in. There's another opportunity at the end of the meeting for things that aren't on the agenda. Thanks. You can see the public comment protocol here. So the first, this first item is for things that are on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Be right back. I'm gonna take advantage of this opportunity to let the dog out. All right, Justin, do we have any? Public comment?
Well, we're good, John. We're good, Grant.
Okay. All right, moving on to item three. Additions to the agenda. We have an addition expenditures for clocks, student desks, student van, and new fencing at RHS and GMS. Item seven C. So if there are any questions on that, can I get a motion to approve the addition to the agenda?
So move.
Thanks, Michael. Can I get a second?
Second that.
Thank you, Neil. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? It was just three of us, so add to the agenda. Thank you. Next items are the consent agenda. Last meeting's minutes. Michael, thanks for catching the paper there. That's been corrected. Bachelors and payrolls, assignment change, resignation, and revised extended day contracts. Any questions on any of those things, board members? If not, I would move to accept the consent agenda. Can I get a second?
This is Neil. I will second that.
Thank you, Neil. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda is passed. All right, so now we move on to reports, and first report, student reports. We're very thankful Talon Betts is joining us tonight. Student Body President, welcome Talon.
Thank you for having me.
Go ahead.
We welcomed over a hundred and twenty incoming freshmen and about twenty-five link crew leaders to help facilitate freshman orientation. But we did like social distance games and like icebreakers and stuff like that. It was pretty fun. We're preparing for homecoming week events, hopefully to include dress up days, homecoming parade if possible, maybe. Social distancing lunchtime events and also like a virtual pep assembly. In November, the leaderboard class along with the staff and students at RHS will have like a food drive competition with Tenino, like a Scatter Creek showdown, I guess you could say. We're still working on a catchy name, but that's in the works. We will also be starting a warrior shout out program where students and staff can give a shout out to students or who be copying good or like, and it'll be like a box in the library and stuff like that. So that's pretty cool. That's all I got.
That's great. Thank you very much. Board members, any questions for Talon?
I think you may have forgotten the three and O record to start off with, but maybe we'll get to that later, so.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty big too, three and O.
Talon, I have one question. When is your homecoming game?
I believe it's seventeenth. I could be wrong. Don't quote me on that.
So it's.
Dan, we'll look it up and get it to you.
Okay.
Sorry, Dan, we lost the, you muted yourself there for the second half of that.
I hope to be, be able to get a picture of the homecoming court for the paper.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Talon. Home game Friday night, right?
Game Friday night against Shelton.
All right. Good luck. You guys are doing great. Thank you. Next items are the building reports. So start off with the primary. Amy and Danny.
Well, thank you very much. So it seems so strange since we didn't get to really talk to you guys last time because of the whatever. So trying to think about things today that would be interesting for someone outside of us. We have this phonics boosters program that Maggie Evans, she's probably talked to the school board about it. And it's specifically designed for us to help those kiddos who've had interrupted learning. So our first and second graders are using this fall phonics booster. And we can see the difference already. So that's pretty significant for the first twenty-five days. That's in addition to their regular core instruction. We've got illustrative math IM that we're piloting K five. And that's been hugely supported by the math coach, Kate, math coach Carrie Black, and our individual building instructional coach Diane Fast. And that's been just like awesome, but there's a, you know, anything that's new, there's a ton of stuff that goes with it. Lots of organizing and talking and figuring out how do you manage this new format, but it's been really good. It's nice to be able to walk through classes and hear kids talk about math in like truly sophisticated ways. And I know I work with five, six, and seven year olds. But listening to them talk about math, the way they've been talking about it, you'd think I was hanging out with like nineteen eighties middle schoolers. Something that our leadership team is focusing on is, you know, bringing back our Warrior of the Week celebration. We can all meet in the gym and have that big celebration, but we're gonna figure out how to do it via Zoom so kids can be in their own cohorts in their classrooms. We're still gonna do the singing, dancing, well, singing while lip syncing because you're not supposed to breathe heavy. And celebrate the kids and they'll still be in all school. Like everybody gets to see every kid who's Warrior of the Week, and we're trying to organize the characteristics to go in line with the socially emotional learning lessons we've got, because we've had the same really worthy characteristics to celebrate friendship, teamwork, integrity, et cetera. But we're trying to organize them in a way that our SEL lessons lay out so that it would be more meaningful to the children. And there are also leadership teams working on other celebrations. You know, bring back the silly fun stuff to school and how can we do that? So we've had, you know, silly sock days and other dress up days. We're gonna get more of that. And of course, our FAST, our Families and Schools Together organization has again purchased for all of our new students, those beautiful blue shirts, the big R. And there's a K five event, and so we're having our blue and gold Fridays anyway. Just trying to add some more of that fun stuff that makes going to school memorable. We're so excited to have specialists back, like the kids get to go to PE. If you ever want to see a PE class, most of the time Erin Fragner, our PE teacher, has the kids outside and it's on the side of the field closest to James Road. So if you want to drive by and watch some PE, feel free. Don't stop. She'll make you do exercises. We've got art back, and then we have added, I'll get to the library again. And then we've added a STEM specialist. Michelle Bretherton is the teacher who is instructing all of our kids. And for those of you who don't know Michelle Bretherton, she is an exemplary teacher to begin with. But she's also had the experience of being a highly capable teacher. So when she applied and we go through the process and everything, my heart just, just soared because it's like every kid at the primary school gets high cap now through the STEM class that she's teaching. And today I was in her room and we were looking, talking about how scientists look for patterns and they see if they can replicate patterns. And then we're doing all these pattern things with our, with cards and cues. In any case, and then the other thing that might be of interest to people outside of us is that the one hundred and forty to one hundred and fifty children who are being dropped off and picked up from school as our transportation mode. And with the start of every school year, everything takes forever because we have, you know, that group of five-year-olds who have not been in a large school setting before, so that, that always takes time to get them acclimated. But being able to get a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty kiddos out of cars and into school or out of school and into cars, it's really, the parents have done a fabulous job of adjusting and we've taken into consideration some of the questions or concerns they've had and made some adjustments on our end. It's going much more timely and I really appreciate all of the families who've, you know, sent reminder messages or called or emailed, stopped by to say, hey, have you thought of? Could you try? Because this is all, you know, monitoring and adjusting. So I've really appreciated that more collaborative family experience. Any thoughts or questions?
Lots of thoughts. A lot of, a lot of work going on, a lot of moving, moving parts, especially with, with new kids. That's great. It's good to hear that, you know, the buzzing situation is, is hard, it's hard to predict early on and then you need to make some adjustments on the fly and it sounds like that's been happening pretty well.
There we go. I'm back.
So you didn't hear anything I just said?
I'm so sorry, Grant. I didn't. I was having technology fun. I had it on a timer because this is, I should stop doing TV things.
Well, it wasn't that important, but no, I was just sharing that, thank you for, you know, busy few, first few days, you know, obviously with with new kids at the, the school. You mentioned the challenges with bus patterns and, and just getting used to that is somewhat unpredictable at the beginning of the school year, especially the conditions we're in. And working to make adjustments, you know, as quickly as we can for families.
Absolutely. Monitor and adjust, monitor and adjust. And Danny has some amazing things to share, so hopefully she's logged in. Maybe she's not here.
I do not see Danny.
Well, I'll cover the things that Danny was gonna talk about. She has been working as our side of RISE because there's this school team for our RISE needs, and that's the new program that Maggie and the district office put together. And they've been working to connect kids and families with resources, the non-academic side of school. Because kids have needs, their parents have needs, and life gets complicated. So she and our team have been working together and they're setting up parameters and all this other business, and teachers have been really good about, hey, I got this message from a parent. I think they could use some blah, blah, blah help. So that has been an extension of our previous, what we called our cares team, which before that was known as our watch list, not really good names, much better names, RISE. And it's coming from the outside. Danny has been observing the systems we have in place. We have kids with big feelings. The whole world's been in a whole lot of stress, and so are the children. And it has taken, you know, all of us to support each of the children and their teachers. And the other part about that too is how fabulous our existing, you know, kinder first and second grade teams. Our first grade team has half new members. And the way that the seasoned teachers are supporting the new teachers on their teams, Danny says it stands out from what she's experienced in her other schools. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our seasoned teachers who've been here and done that. They still got spark and joy, and they're sharing it with the new folks. And some of our new people have got a just terrific skill set. So very pleased with people who've joined our team. And I'm not gonna talk for Kelly now. I'm good.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Very much. We'll, we'll move over to the elementary. Kelly and Kelsey?
And, and first of all, good evening. Kelsey is, she may join us a little later. She's in Little Rock at a in a Zoom, but she's with an event there for her own children who attend Little Rock. So she is gonna pop in later, but I will speak for both of us. Although Amy says she's not gonna speak for us, she covered a lot of things I would have shared as well. Kelsey has been key at GMS at the parent pickup while I am the James Road Traffic Control. So I've been very happy to have her up back, helping with that, of working with our EAs and parents and making adjustments on our end as well. So just did what Amy said on, on many things. At the first of the year, coming back, our connection conferences were awesome as we came back. I don't think we've shared about that. Because that was late the last week in October or in August. That was wonderful to see parents. It was great for the teachers, great for families. It was great for Kelsey and I to get to see the families there and connect with some who had some particular needs that they wanted to communicate to us. Our routines are slow and steady, but they're getting in place. So every routine, just from the transitions, it's a brand new schedule, different from what we've had in the past at GMS. And the routines of kids checking in and getting the buses settled. We're getting ready to start our interventions, as we mentioned. Some have already started. So we should have everything, all of our different interventions from our students serve with IPs have started up. EL starting up soon, high cap tomorrow. And we're testing this week so we can make placement determinations for title lap as well. So we're excited to see that come into place. Although at our building as well, we're doing phonics booster with our third grade and a program called Rewards, which is similar, but the older version, to put it briefly. And then, you know, our new staff is settling in quite well. At GMS, all four of our specialists are new this year. So we have a new music teacher and new to our district. Our librarian is new to being a librarian, and that's been fabulous. We have a new STEM teacher with a teacher we had last spring, Ms. Studenmeyer. And then Mr. Moké, he is not new to GMS, but he is new to the fitness role. So it's been super exciting because these guys are all super pumped. And of course, we didn't have those specialists last year. So the kids are super excited and engaged in those programs. And glad to be back. And our new teachers are, are doing well in their roles as well. We too are trying to continue, get back into our celebrations. So we do our warrior pride every day and announce that over the intercom. We do a clean classroom award at our school to try to help encourage pride in the school. We do that each week. And then our leadership team is working on our plans for how can we do student of the month assembly via Zoom and, and or some other celebrations to just bring our ASB together, our student body together as a, as a whole unit and start to feel like a student body again. So lots of good things underway. Any questions about anything there?
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate all your work and your team and everybody's doing to keep us rolling here. I know it's been a very busy time.
It is definitely a team effort all the way, all the way around.
It's exciting to have everybody back in school. This is great.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on to the middle school. Will and Todd, I think Will may just be Todd, right?
That'll be me. Yeah, Will is helping welcome his third grandchild into the world today. So good times for him and happy missing assist or principal day. Three things I'd like to share with you guys. Thanks for this opportunity. First of all, overall, I think the school year is off to a great start, all things considered. Connecty, Connect for Success conferences with families and students continued to be a big success. We got a lot of positive feedback. I think we made some good connections. Found out some things about kids and families that are gonna help us serve them well this year. Our leadership students under the direction of Jen Littlefield did a great job of getting the building welcome, doing some activities with them to welcome students and get some posters out, make the building feel a little more fun and exciting than just all of the COVID and mask signs. Our teachers did a great job kind of setting the tone, establishing relationship type activities those first couple of days, but also setting high expectations for academic progress as well. And I just think we, we hit a really good balance there. And I think most of our kids went home and I hope, I feel like they probably told their parents they had a pretty good day at school and we're excited to come back. We've added some great new staff members this year. I don't want to name them individually and forget somebody, but we are just really excited about our new hires. We're just working to support them, make them feel welcome, and in some cases, kind of get out of their way and let them share with us some of the great skills and qualities that they bring to our school and to our kids. And lastly, I guess I just want to mention that, that our kids are doing a great job coming back after a summer off in the middle of a pandemic and by and far, most of them are working really hard, doing their job to be a student, and we see a lot of good things. It's kind of our, our goal to district goal as a result of some of the PD and training and stuff we've done, but we want every kid to feel a, a connection to the school and a sense of belonging. And I think we're, we're off to a good start with that.
That's great. Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd? Other than was today, you know, being absent principal day, was it, was it your best day so far?
They're all good days, but I definitely miss Principal Moss.
That's awesome. Thank you. All right, moving to the high school. Mike and Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, I think the, the most exciting news and is our addition of our new athletic director, Mr. Kevin Yurik. With Jesse Elam going to places that we should not be, needs be said down the road. We, we've hired a great replacement with, with Kevin and we're super excited to have him on board. He's just a wonderful human being and he's gonna do a great job for us as an athletic director. School wise, we're off to a great start as well, echoing a lot of what Todd said. Our teachers are working really hard to finalize our school improvement plans and to really build that culture of learning back. Really engaging kids in how to have some person-to-person conversations and how to interact to students again, which is taking some, you know, they're, they're spending some really crucial time and making sure kids feel that they're, they're welcome and they belong. We have a couple of great interventionists on staff this year. So Ms. Pamela Johnson and Lisa Wilson are working with a lot of kids in our school who may need a little extra support. Lisa Wilson is our, is our graduation specialist or support specialist. And her goal is to have one hundred percent of our seniors with a post-secondary plan. So it's, it's pretty, pretty remarkable. It's, it's a large goal, but it's a very doable goal. And then, you know, Kevin and I have just been working out the kinks of the starting of a new year, but man, is it great to have kids back on campus and just to, to see them and to interact with them and, and they're enjoying being in their classrooms and it's, it's really nice to see. Kevin, did I leave anything out for you?
Oh, not really. Talon took a lot of the great things we're doing at the high school, but just college planning night is going on right now as we speak via Zoom. So their college planning night, their ways to choose a college, how to choose a major and how to pay for college and timelines to get into college. They're doing that via Zoom tonight to get an early start on their, their senior year. Any questions about the high school? I have the date of homecoming, but I was gonna let Kevin Yurik, D D, speak to that. He'll be up here pretty soon.
Yeah, he'll be up next, yes. Question for Michael, Kevin?
This is Neil. I'd just like to say thank you to everyone, all the administrators, all the teachers. Please let everybody know. Me and I know the rest of the board feels the same way. Thank you, thank you, thank you for re-engaging with the students, getting them back in class, working on getting the kids back up to the standards of the grades that they're in. And it means a lot for our community. Thank you. Again, thank you.
Ditto, Neil. Just really appreciate all the, all the buildings getting up and going and you guys sharing those first few weeks is not a lot of questions, just really pleased with what we're hearing this evening. So thank, thanks all of you.
Great. Thank you, Michael, Neil. Ditto again. All right. Well, thank you very much. We will move on to building reports. I'm sorry, management reports. And first up is Kevin Yurik, our new athletic director. Welcome, Kevin. Is this about a week on the job now in this role?
Tomorrow will be my first day solo.
Okay.
So I've been kind of, been kind of phasing in and we said goodbye to a good man, a good friend and Jesse Elam today, but for all the right reasons, he's choosing to go to Chehalis. So so yeah, you know, and I don't mean to come in and disappoint, but I don't know the date of homecoming. Mr. Wilson, what is the date of homecoming?
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth. Okay, there we go. So this early in the season, you know, we just have a few weeks of competition behind us. So, you know, I reached out to coaches today and and asked them for a little bit of information. So I'll just go ahead and get started and we'll start with, with the middle school, middle school soccer. Coach Young, I just want to kind of provide you an overview and, you know, the numbers that have come out and some comments by the coaches. But they have twenty-nine kids turning out, twenty-eight are currently rostered, which, which they were able to make two teams with. And there are several that turned out late, but they're getting eligible to play. So he commented that, you know, no one's complaining. They're playing hard. They both had two matches and their third one was today. Did mention that attendance and sickness has kind of taken a toll on both teams. And this is not uncommon in the COVID climate that we live in, but they've had to play with nine at one point. But they're playing hard and they're, they're, they're holding their own and doing well against some tough teams. Coach Sherdal. Numbers, they have thirty-three signed up, twenty-eight are current, on the current roster. Currently they're one and O beating Tenino last week thirteen to twelve. Monty came to us. It was kind of a late schedule. Tim Trimble, the AD from Montesano was looking to get his seventh graders a game, knowing that they were gonna come to our place and play some seventh and eighth graders and their coach didn't want anymore after somewhere in the first quarter, we were beating them fourteen to zero. So they headed back to Montesano. Mrs. Current and Cole Current, cross-country, nine middle school runners, and, and her highlight right now is Taylor Brown took seventh overall for the girls to the first invite, which was the capital invite. Any questions about the middle school?
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, you're very welcome. High school, so cross-country, Coach Crockett, number sixteen boys, three girls. The girls team, they don't have enough. They don't have enough to actually compete as a team, but they're working hard. Let's see, the boys are one and one in league. They, they competed today. I don't know the results of that. They have seven senior boys. Six of them started running in the middle school and one started as a freshman. They did it the capital invite. They had three boys placed in the top twenty and one girl was within three places of that very same finish. And, and the invite, just to note. That very same finish. And the invite, just to note, you know, had some three and four A schools competing. That's a, that's a competitive invite. So. That's a really encouraging sign. Volleyball, you know, I had the opportunity to, and although we're on a pause this week right now, I had the opportunity to go to Centralia over the weekend. On Saturday and I watched some pool play and. I saw some, I saw some ups and downs. I saw some girls working hard that continued to keep a smile. Even times where they were getting beaten. But I did see them in bracket play. They sent Winlock home in the first round and then were sent to the consolation bracket. By Centralia. And although I couldn't stay for the rest of the tournament, they did end up taking fourth overall. Girls soccer, so 26 players, one, one that's coming back to equal 27. She's coming back off academic probation, but she's got her practices in. She'll be eligible Tuesday. You know, although their, their, their record is, is not overly strong right now. The note that Coach Matthews has shared is. In the first six games, they've scored more goals than they did in the last three seasons combined. They've been competitive in all of their games. They've held the lead in three. Losing in the last minute to two and then one other loss was in overtime. And two of those losses, they, one of the, the gal that's coming back from academic probation is, is, I believe they're. Their star goalkeeper, if I, if I'm correct. So they had some volunteer goalkeepers in there and that makes a bit of a difference, you know, guarding the goal. But happy with what he's seeing. Golf, Coach Holmquist, team's growing. Year by year, there's 15 out now. They had seven last year who scores. Would qualify them for district. Their record is currently one and two. Football, 43 boys out. Some came out a little bit late, so they gained six in the last couple of weeks. JV is one and O. As it was alluded to earlier, you know, three and O record. You know, and I gotta say, it's been, it's been some time and I've been at the high school for quite a while where we've had a three and O record. In the football season. So although we're in this kind of, kind of crazy weird COVID climate, there. There is a positive energy at the high school right now. And as, as Talon mentioned. Shelton comes to us on Fridays and I, I. My hope that we, we get a lot of people out in the stands or wearing their masks and behaving and just really supporting our program because it's really, really exciting. The coaches are encouraged where they're at right now, a third of the way through the season. They've made notable progress and in a hard fought game last Friday I was at. They beat Black Hills 24-22 and Mother Nature was not kind and you know, I got to take my hat off to the cheer squad. They're soaking wet and their lips are blue and cold, but they continue to smile. So. That's what I have for you this evening is, is, are there any questions I can clarify?
This is Grant and no questions. Just thank you for taking on this new role. We're excited to, excited to have you and. Really appreciate your experience to this point, but, but know you'll bring a lot to this role for us. It's exciting to see all the athletics going and rolling and, and the success too. And it's just great.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm excited to be here.
Hey Kevin, I join Grant and welcoming you. Thanks for stepping in in such short time. Can you say a little bit more about the volleyball pause? I don't know if Kim was going to cover that later, but. I think you mentioned some, some impact at the middle school too. Say a little bit more about what the high school impact is on that, do you think?
Well, earlier in the week. Due to, you know, the, the, the climate that we're in and, and some sickness. It made sense with, you know, in, in communicating with. With the, with the school nurse and administration to, to pause the, the week with regard to practice and competition. This week. So. We need to have some conversations in the morning about next steps going forward. To see if, you know, if we feel collectively that we're ready to let them begin practice again on Friday. Whether or not they should compete at a tournament on, on Saturday. So. You know, that's something that we're going to be seeing and reassessing. I'm, I'm anticipating first thing in the morning.
And Kevin, did it impact, I, I understand there's a lot of girls out this year. Is it impacting all the squads? Or just the varsity or how, how widespread?
My, my answer that, to that would be because, because they practice together. If you're, if you're referring to the pause itself. All the student athletes in that program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Durick, I will be arranging to interview you and get a picture of you for a story about the new AD.
Oh geez, they didn't tell me about that.
Occupational hazard.
Okay, okay.
Thanks Dan. Thank you, Kevin. Welcome. All right, next up, Ed, maintenance?
Yes, nice to see everybody's faces again. We've been working diligently, maintenance and custodial to get buildings ready for all the kids to come back. Very excited to see all the kids. We've got parking lots painted. We're. Working on irrigation systems that have been more than challenging this year. I would like to take that opportunity to say thank you to everybody that has helped. Things in the past, us get equipment to do the jobs that we need to do. Because for example, today between Ms. Grim Gardner's parents unloading. During the day before the, the parents came back to pick their kids up, we had 600 feet of road surface we had to build because we're having cars. To get them off of James Road, we're taking them through fields and building roads and. None of that would be able to be done without tractors and dump trailers. So everybody, I would like to say thank you for that. My guys are constantly, when they come in from doing the job, I realize and how blessed it is to have the equipment to do the job. So. Thank you for that. Lily Morgan has finished her, the trail that she was working on with all her. Squad and everybody that helped her on that. And it's a, a big hit. A lot of the public uses the trail, walks around. It's a half mile. In front of the high school, if people don't know where that's at. There's, there's going to be signage put up at a later date, but it's a nice walk, especially in the summertime. A lot of people were using it. So. And I think Mr. Crockett's pretty excited to get another half mile to his cross-country track. So. We're getting real creative with our storage and logistic issues that we're, we're facing with. Restuffing classrooms and more PPE and we've added more shelving at the maintenance shop and. We're, we're kind of like a small warehouse now slash maintenance shop. So. What's it, the van trailers and the storage shelves, we're actually kind of getting a pretty good system that seems to be manageable at this point. Other than that, just the same old normal stuff. Any questions?
No questions for me, Michael or Neil?
Yeah, just, I guess kind of an odd question, but I know we're seeing it and a lot around the neighborhood. Was there much damage with that heat this summer? Did we lose a lot of the? I guess yard stuff and plants and.
Well, a lot of those, one of the biggest issues is that the heat didn't help anything, but is the. And we face this with almost every single thing that we went up against this summer or this last eight, nine months. Is, and whenever you go to get something, you, you can't get it. The logistics part is just absolutely incredible, whether it's a sprinkler box or whether. No matter what it is, we had to replace a preschool shed and it took us four months to get it. I mean, it's just, it's just that way on every single thing. I ordered parking lot paint in February. And I got told in the end of July that I wasn't going to get it period. And. We painted all our school parking lots by buying two gallons here and four gallons here and scrounging it up. And we literally had paint companies. That do parking lots for a living stop by and say, how'd you get your parking lots painted? Where'd you get your paint? And we didn't want to tell them our secret, but. It's just, it's just been that way on everything this summer, you know, just nobody has anything in stock and nobody can get anything. So. Yeah, to answer your question, some of, we had a lot of the, all the lawns and stuff will come back. We didn't have any serious tree damage or anything like that, but. Things aren't nearly as green as we'd like them to be, you know, with the kids coming back, but. We'll get it back.
Thank you and appreciate the extra information too. I didn't realize how much you were struggling to get the supplies you needed. So thanks for sharing.
This is Neil. I'd just like to say thank you again to your team and your crews that are working to keep. All the Rochester schools in great shape. I bet it's a, at this point, I would think it's probably a good thing that the football is playing on a slick field instead of a muddy swamp, the way it was in the springtime. So I'm sure the field looks beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks Neil. Thank you very much, Ed. All right, we will move on to business reports. And Jill?
Where would you like to start?
Can we just start, we'll just go through each of the reports. We start with the all fund summary?
Sure. So my annual August disclaimer, because we're in a cruel district, these are not final year in reports. They're just preliminary numbers and August will actually change. But for preliminary, the general fund ended August at 5.7 million, capital projects at 3.2. Debt service at 1.6 million, ASB at 458,000 and transportation vehicle at 139,000.
Right. And then next, next time I list here anyways, the budget says.
So at the August 31st, our revenues were just at 99.88% of what was budgeted and our expenditures at 93.9%. Again, this isn't final because we'll continue accruals through October.
All right, and the monthly board report for August?
So the preliminary breakdown of the general fund ending fund balance is 521,000 restricted for carryover revenues. The 2.7 committed to fund balance policy, 1.7 restricted to the local sub-fund and 747,000 unreserved.
And enrollment summary, September?
So the FTE for September was 1,986.91. The amount budgeted was 2,000 and that, that number includes both heart in the virtual academy, that budgeted amount. So we are at 13 under budget.
And right now we don't have numbers on running start yet, is it?
Right. So that running start, the first count month is October.
Okay. So would those running start students today be included in the 1986?
No, they're, they're included over on the far right, the head count.
Oh, gotcha.
Of 2028. So running start kids would be there, but not in the FTE.
Got it. Thank you.
There are currently eight students at heart. And the sped count of 278. And we have not received the gravity count yet this month.
All right. And then the last one is the trends.
So if you look on the left, just below the 2,000 line, you'll see the dot of our September count.
Yeah.
So we're just a little bit less than where we ended last year.
And, and yeah, okay, that makes sense. Michael, Neil? Sorry, I just got to pop through those.
I, I do have a question, Grant. Thank you. And it's, I understand it's an unfair question coming out, so I don't expect an answer tonight, but. With the enrollment down some. I know over the years, sometimes we've been pretty close to that line. Around two A versus A and classifications and so forth. Is there, is that something worth looking at or do we think that we might be in a place where we would? Be going down in classification or is it just, just that? The amount doesn't really, isn't material enough to make that difference?
I think it would, my answer, I don't know if you were asking me, but I think it would depend on what the other schools are doing because they take you in chunks. So if. Statewide, everyone's dropping, I think we would probably all stay chunked together.
Because they're proportionating it out, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's true. That's a good answer. Thank you. Just dawned on me when I heard those numbers.
Any other questions for Jill? Thank you very much. All right, administrative reports. Justin and Kim, is Justin, you going first?
Yep, I get to go first. So, all right. So I have been spending time with. Amy and Kelly and Todd's and Michael and Kevin's new staff members, a lot of time with new staff members. Which, which has been a really good thing. So the last two Mondays. After school. I've spent doing horizontal framework training with, with our new staff members and talking to them about instruction and giving them on board. About the type of instruction, expectations here and, and just, just to have a, a really good dialogue and develop a common vocabulary. So we can have good conversations about instruction when, when we start going through the evaluation process, when we start going. When we're on teams and, and just, and just talking in general. So we can be, be very strong in those, in those areas. And, and you know what? My, my trainings are from four to six at night. And you know, the, the, the first Monday, I just kept going and going and going and in two hours, I didn't even give them a bathroom break. I, because I was so excited and they were so, they were smiling at me like they were having a great time. So why stop? Just keep on going for two straight hours. So this last, this last Monday, I did set my, set an alarm and I gave them a break at five o'clock, but. The time just flies by with, with, with this group of, of, of new staff. It's a really good mix of. I, rookies, zero years experience to some, some folks that are very veteran, 15, 20 years experience. And, and they are just, they're, they're, they're learning to talk to each other and they're learning to feed off each other. And it's just really, really cool to see. A, a group come together and, and you know, they have spent since August 15th, they have spent about. Probably 20 plus hours together as a group. And so they, we, we do that on purpose so that they, they do get to know each other. And so there's some safety in, in conversations. And, and whatnot, whether they're in our larger group across building or, or at their own building. And then Maggie and I get our first, tomorrow will be our first one hour after school training with, with them as well. As we're starting a book study, a book study with them and we'll meet with RMS and RHS teachers first. Right after school for an hour and then we'll follow that up by running over real quick to Grand Mountain meeting with the RPS and, and GMS. New staff there for an hour, doing the same book study. So. And, and typically those, those meetings, those one hour meetings after school are some of the highlights of my, my month. That when I meet they, I, I can feed their, their great energy and I feed off, off those meetings and. It's the closest I get to having a classroom these days. So I have my own students, even though they are teachers, but I've, but it's fun for me and, and it's very energizing. So. That's kind of how I'm spending lots of my time right now. So.
Are you ready for me?
Sorry, I was saying that with the.
So I will talk about a few different topics later in the agenda is the topic of staffing. So I'll come back and, and address a couple staffing. Conversations at that point, but to get us started, it's always good to get grounded in why we do the work we do and. At this point in the school year, people start getting tired. Our, our principals are working super long hours, our teachers, everyone else in this. In our system is working super hard to meet all the needs of our students and to adjust to just. meet all the needs of our students and to adjust to just the, the changing dynamics that have been brought about as a result of COVID and various safety um requirements. And so um it's always good to, to get us started with, this, this is why we do the work, these kiddos and um hopefully you can see my slides, correct? All right. And this has been mentioned time and time again. Tonight, we have staff that are working hard and doing amazing things for kids. And so just wanted to acknowledge them and um the, the great things that are happening within our district. And the other thing I want to talk about, and it's been brought up um by several people tonight, is that um in addition to providing direct support to students, our educators are our learners. Uh we spend a lot of time, we spend Friday afternoons um learning with and from each other, I'm digging in deep to the data, looking at what we can do to further support our students and their families. Um but we see ourselves not just as educators, but as learners, that we always need to be sharpening our own skills in order to, to get the best results for our kids. Um, just a couple of the random things. Um Wednesday, the 29th is our PLC at Work Board Training. I misspoke last time we had our meeting and said the start was at 5:30. It is at five o'clock. And I will get you that, so anybody who wants to zoom like now can have it, but I have it set to go out to you at four o'clock on this Wednesday so that you'll have it at the top of your email box to be able to get in for that training. Again, this will be with other boards from around our state, learning about um PLCs. And it is a um hour and a half training. Excuse me. Um, this has been the crux of the work right now and and administrative side of it is balancing the health of students and community safety with in-person instruction. And so spending a lot of time working with our local health department officials and um others within the system to, to try to strike that correct balance. You have heard tonight that there was a pause put on volleyball. And that pause occurred because we had three individuals within the volleyball program who all tested positive. And um when, when you have that number, it's considered an outbreak and then you put your program on pause. And so we'll be talking with county health department again tomorrow, but that pause is likely to go another week. Um most often it's a 14-day situation, so and we'll verify that with them tomorrow, but that is what um I'm most prepared to hear.
Yeah.
Yes.
But is there, is there a, can you test out of the 14 day if, if enough kids are able to test and show that they're, they're not positive?
That is a fantastic question. So right now, um if we, students who are fully vaccinated would be able to test out of that pause. Students who are not fully vaccinated are not allowed at this point to test out of that pause. And so I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that program that I referenced that hopefully will be in place for us soon where, where people can test out. So I, I'll keep going and I'll get into a little bit more detail about that in a minute.
Good, thanks.
No problem. Other questions before I move on? So these are, I want to be ma- get really clear, it says it on here twice, preliminary, this preliminary data um about our COVID positive cases um over the last three-week time period. So as a district, we had two positive cases reported, um September 5th through 11th. Six, six cases on the 12th through the 18th and 13 cases so far during this timeframe of the 19th through 25th. So you can definitely see the ramp up. Um two weeks ago when we met, I shared that we were anticipating this would occur. Um it's the result of bringing people together in a school environment and Labor Day impacts. And so we, we knew this was likely going to happen, so we're not surprised. Do we like it? No. Um but it is not shocking to us. And this next section, um I need to be really clear about what this reports. So this reports close contacts that were identified by the school or reported to the school. So I suspect there are many more students who have been close contact in close contact with somebody who tested positive, but have not been reported to us. So an example would be somebody in a, in a student's household tests positive and parent is calling them, you know, calling in saying the student is home today. Um but doesn't necessarily tell us whether they're sick or what, what, why they are staying home. And so it takes us a while to get that information. And these are the ones that we're aware of um for those three-week period of time. Again, preliminary data, we have nurses and health room assistants and principals who are work, secretaries who are working to help us do contact tracing. And so they were still putting data in when I was completing this information this afternoon. So these are preliminary, but you can definitely see the impact. Um the majority of the close contacts that have been identified having occurred within the school system have occurred on the bus. So that is the, the area where kids are most likely to be within that that range of being identified as close contact. And then the other is uh as a participant of athletics. So those are our two areas. I'll pause and see if there's any questions from the board at this point. Michael.
Kim, is the um, the 13, are those all students or is that a mixture of staff and students?
It would be a mixture of students and staff. Again, not all of these stu- 13 students contracted COVID at school. But they're the ones that we know about have been reported to the school system. Other questions from board? All right, I will move along. Um we had, I mentioned this earlier, I've shown this slide several times, those students who are fully vaccinated, if they're identified as one of those close contacts and do not have any symptoms, they are allowed to stay in school. So really this is that benefit of being vaccinated. And what I was hoping to do tonight was to um next was to unveil a new program that will be made available to us at some point. Um I was in a meeting this morning that ended at 7:30 AM where it looked like Thurston County Schools would be able to participate in this program called Test to Stay as early as next Monday. And I'll explain it to you in general. I'll wait to go into the details since at um 4:03 today, I received this email, not that you have to read it all, but basically the, the ju- the crux of it all is unfortunately, we were made aware of a situation with a very large number of respiratory infections or infection cases at a school. So this was someplace in Thurston County. Um we have not determined if this is COVID yet. Until we gather more information on the situation, we will not be changing our quarantine guidance or implementing the test to stay protocol. So that's what we were hoping to do. And so this came out from the, our local health department. Um but the test to stay protocol basically allows students either vaccinated or unvaccinated to um modify their quarantine period um through testing. So as long as their exposure happened at school and um they agree to quarantine at home except for their time at school. So they can't participate in athletics, they can't participate in other things. But just for the educational component of school, they can um if they're with parent permission, um be part of a testing program where they test a, either the second or the third day after exposure. And then, and if they're not symptomatic and that test comes back negative, they can continue to attend school. And then they get tested again between days five and seven post-exposure. Again, if they're still asymptomatic and um test negative, uh they can just continue on and don't have to, to quarantine away from school. But it's very clear in this program that it does not allow them to go back and do sports, other extracurricular activities. This is only to allow them to um have a at-school education. Um so this is what we thought we were going to be putting in place early next week that is currently on pause until they figure out um the, the root of that respiratory infection that seems to be plaguing a school. Questions about this? Or uh other COVID-related matters?
Yeah, Kim, this is Neil. With the uh outbreak with the uh volleyball team, um how does that transfer with the WIAA? Um were there teams that they were playing, they also may have had uh close contacts with that are involved? The teams that we were playing against, or, or I assume there's another flow chart for same thing with vaccinated versus unvaccinated uh students that were playing in sports?
There is um, there are flow charts for a lot of things, that's for sure, very complicated flow charts. Um however, um we do notifications to teams that we've had um recent contact with to let them know. And then, of course, we're communicating if we need to cancel any games or, or um events, jamborees, those types of things.
Me, I maybe added that, I, I read through this a couple of weeks ago, but it, one of the things with volleyball too is it's a low-contact sport.
Right.
They're making contact with the other team. They're not shaking hands after the game, they're waving and.
The risk is very minimal to opposing teams in the sport of volleyball, that's for sure.
Are they wearing masks while they're playing?
I would say some teams are, Rochester's team does. My daughter plays, so I, I've witnessed it. Um the WIA rules allow players to not wear masks and some teams, it's, so you see a mix of it.
So it's a not, not a requirement, but our teams have been masking.
Okay, well I just, I could just imagine, you know, trying to spike the ball over the net and you're breathing heavy and the opposing team is within, you know, eight or 10 inches of you on the other side of the net, trying to keep you from putting the ball on their side. So I assume that there is semi-close contact, at least the ones that are on the front line.
Yeah, the, the, you know, formal definitions of close contact are, are 15 minutes or more in a 24-hour period of time. And so and that's likely not to be considered a close contact. And but there are probably a few situations where it could, there could be an exception to that.
Awesome, thank you.
You are welcome. So I believe the, the rest of my um topics tonight are under that other agenda item. So questions, oh, Michael, yes.
Yeah, Kim, I'm trying to uh reconcile this a little bit, so. It, I thought what I heard was that we may be able to participate in a pilot project to see if regular testing kids it will allow them to stay in school, but not do the extracurricular. Um is it something we get to choose whether we want to do it or not? Is it something that all schools in Thurston County are doing, but not other counties? I'm trying to get a sense of how much of a risk or test this really is, or this is just the new protocol?
So this is a new state suggested protocol. However, before a school district can participate in the protocol, we have to enter into an agreement with our local health department. So they have to be willing to say, yes, we think it's safe in your community to be able to participate in this program. And so that, that was the change today between 7:30 AM and 4:03 was, uh oh, we're not so sure it's safe for us to do this right now, so we're going to put it on, on hold for the time being. But it really isn't, it isn't a situation of starting to test everyone. It really is only testing those people who uh have been identified as a close contact in finding out whether or not they have symptoms and whether or not they test positive. And if they're not, if they don't test positive, the thought is um why are we keeping them home? They don't have symptoms and they're, and they test negative, why do we keep them home for 14 days, which is the, the current protocol across our state? And so this is just allow some flexibility from that to get kids into school. So they're not missing so much.
Okay, so we've, just to be clear, we've made the request to the health department saying we would like to be one of those districts?
Yeah, as have all Thurston County school districts.
Okay.
Yeah. Basically, it was like, do we get to do this yet? And so it was, yes, we do, we'll, we'll get you up to speed by Monday and then it was timeout. Um we're not going to move as fast as we thought, so. And we have, um I have parents reaching out to me who are aware of this as an option. And it's happening in other counties across our state, not all of them. But there are a few others who have started it, who are like, is this going to be available? I would really like this to be available. Um if my, if my child ends up being a close contact with somebody, I would love this option so that they don't have to miss school.
Yeah, I, I, I do get that and I join the rest of the world that want these kids to be in the, in there as much as possible. I also see from week to week now, three weeks, it's doubling. And so it just causes a bit of pause, but thank you for explaining.
You're welcome. Looks like it will be a while still. All right, if you have no other questions, we'll move on to the, the next order of business and um Grant, I don't know if, if you're okay with same protocols last year, but this is the point in the program where we allowed our very hard-working administrators to call it a day if, if they would like to.
Yes, yeah, thank you very mu- thank you very much for your reports tonight and, and all the work you're doing. Obviously, you're all welcome to stay, but it's, we've had lots of long days and uh so that, I think that ding tells us.
Hey, hey, Matt, can we take a couple of minutes before we move on as well?
You want to take a little pause?
That would be helpful.
Uh, five minutes? Okay, five minutes, we will be back at 7:45. All right, Michael, Neil, see everybody's, it looks like everybody's back. Just a little before 7:45. Any objections to getting started? Okay. All right, so our next item is the redistricting. So at our last meeting, Samanish, Samanish Data Systems. I'm blanking on his name, Kim.
Um, me too.
Sorry.
Sorry, no, that's all right, it'll come to me in just a minute, I'm sure.
He did a wonderful job presenting the data associated with redistricting, you know, again, just to get, get all our numbers in each district equivalent. As, as equivalent as possible. And the task document there that you shared with us last week gets us to with, you know, with less than 1% difference. Per district, so that ideal district is a 3,031 per district. And I think what's proposed here is somewhere between 3,016 as a low, 3,003 at a low and 3,058 at a high. So you did a really good job of, you know, within less than 0.8 of a percentage. To get, make sure those numbers are equivalent, I think the other things he pointed out were ensuring that any current school board members, you know, they're still within their district. Nobody gets kicked out. And as well as any, any, any candidates for open positions are also within those boundaries. And, and the boundary shifts he made are pretty, pretty minor, or recommended, I should say. So our next steps were to. Recommend. What is the next step here, Kelly, we're recommending the next, the next phase in this process, right?
Right, and so really what we need is an action from the board this evening that would say that you either agree with the methodology that he's using and you are happy with that. And if so, that you would approve that plan for him to then do the legal descriptions that he had mentioned at our last meeting. And, and get us prepared for the next step of the process before these become official. And the board will. Pass a resolution related to these, but we can't do that resolution until those legal descriptions have been prepared. And he, it's Bob Schweitzer, Bob won't do those until the board says we are in agreement with the methodology in terms of how he chose to readjust the boundary lines. As long as those made sense to you, then I would ask that the board would motion to approve him moving forward.
Okay, so Michael, I know you, you weren't, you weren't able to be here at the last, last meeting when he walked, walked us through this. I'm not sure if you had had the chance to, to look through the documents.
I, I did, I checked the maps out today and I, I'm fine with them. You know, it's like county maps or something, they're not complete little squares or kind of wiggly all over, but I think that's how we get to balance numbers. So I'm comfortable moving forward, thank you.
He, he did a great job last week, kind of walking us through where he made the changes. You know, tried to kind of follow the same lines we had, but making the shift that where it made sense. And also got us to those numbers. So we, Kim, can you restate the recommendation?
Yes, the, the recommendation would be approval of Samanish moving forward in creating the legal descriptions to take us to the next step in our process. We can just say, you know, something like that. Yeah, that was a lot of words, sorry.
I would make a motion that we approve moving forward with Samanish Data Systems taking the next step in, in. Creating the legal, legal documentation and language around these suggested changes.
Second.
Neil, one second.
All right.
Did I cut you off a question, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, I was just, I was just following the motion with seconding it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll have more time to discuss it if, if something comes up. But again, my, my impression, this was, these are very minor changes and I think the right changes. To ensure that each district is represented equally. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Right, so move that forward, thank you. Our next item is the National SFA Convention itinerary update. So this, board members, remember, we approved this trip earlier, or middle, middle of the summer. I think the trip is coming up in October.
So I believe we have somebody here to speak to this tonight.
Oh, great.
Is that accurate?
I do not see anybody here that would be speaking to that trip at this time.
Kim, if you want to give me a couple of minutes, I'll try and reach them and see if we, if we can move this down maybe. And I will see if I can reach out to them and see if someone can join into the meeting. Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Sean, so we will, we'll come, we'll come back to item B and open business and we'll move on to item C, staffing update.
Yes. Give me another second and I will share my screen. So we're going to talk about staffing from two different perspectives. First of all, open positions. So I want to walk you through the positions we currently have open within our district. And give you a little bit of the rationale for each of those. And in some cases, talk about the impacts of not having those filled at this time. So we have two special education teaching positions open. One is at the Rochester Primary Rochester Early Intervention Preschool. And that is as a result of additional students enrolling in this, in our system that. Are eligible for these special education support services. And then the high school special education position is to backfill the vacancy. That is, was created when Kevin Urick was appointed as our assistant or as our athletic director. So those are the special education positions. Kindergarten, we continue to have kindergartners move into the district and enroll after the start of the school year. And it was pushing those class sizes up considerably. With a group of students who really had lacked any formal educational experience. So kindergartners, many of them come to us with a preschool experience. Most of these students weren't given that luxury with COVID over the last couple of years. I'm lacking in that preschool experience and so needing some more support. And so we didn't want those class sizes to be too high in kindergarten. So adding a kindergarten teacher there. And then in-house classified and certificated substitutes. So in it, in addition to having access to substitutes through a substitute service. And in our substitute service situation, we are as part of a cooperative with other school districts. So we have a pool of people and districts from around our area are all seeking these same substitutes to fill their vacancies any given day. In the last couple of years, we have tried to hire a couple of certified teachers to be permanent substitutes. So they work for us every day and they go to wherever their assistance is needed. And so we're at least guaranteed that we have a couple substitutes always available to us. So we are in the process of filling those positions. And this year we're also adding some classified substitutes that we'll have available every day. And there's some increased expense in doing that, but there's also that guarantee that they're going to be available for you. And so we are working to fill those. We had a last, a late resignation from our teacher for, the teacher of the deaf, it should say, not if the deaf, but of the deaf, I apologize. So we need to fill that position. We have a two-day-a-week occupational therapist position. And then three special education, educational, special education, educational assistants. One at the primary, one at Grandmount Elementary, one at Rochester High School. And one title lap EA at Rochester Middle School. And so those are all as a result of. Student need, kids who have come into our system. The middle school, we had not filled a position for them last year that had been vacated. And so this is bringing them back up to, to full staffing there. And the next two custodians, we have a custodian that you approved a resignation for tonight. And then a custodian that will be leaving us soon for retirement. And so we need to fill those positions as well as replenish our substitutes in our custodial area. And those positions have been open, they're, they're, have been open for a year and we fill them. And then we have people leave our system and we fill them again. And so it's just kind of this revolving door of, of custodians. And then, as you've heard, first student is in need of bus drivers and monitors. Unfortunately, it's sad for me to report that today, during the middle of the day, they had another driver decide that they no longer want to drive. And so these, these into the school year resignations are particularly troublesome and, and hard to accommodate. So between the morning route and the afternoon route. They had to scramble and try to figure out how they were going to get these kids home with one less driver. And they were already using a dispatcher as a driver today. And this, the, the bus driver situation is, has created. A lot of issues, not only in our district, but everywhere. And this is part of a, a larger driver shortage, a shortage of delivery drivers, of long-haul trucker drivers. You know, transit bus drivers, school bus drivers. It's particularly difficult in the bus driver arena because with that CDL license, you are eligible to be a delivery driver. And in a delivery driver situation, you may not make more money. But you don't have the responsibility of, of all those children. And, you know, interactions with their parents and, you know, being on time and all of those things. So there's a lot of demand for delivery drivers, et cetera. And so people are being enticed, they're getting enticed to, to go and be delivery drivers. Or it's also a subsegment of folks who are often retired. And they were just doing this to kind of supplement their income and are trying to figure out if it's really worth their while these days when there's the risk of COVID infection and, and everything else. Whether this is something they want to continue to do. So we continue to come up with creative solutions for our busing situations. As I had briefed you earlier, we have, we have a route that doesn't go very far, but has a lot of students on it that we have broken up and do two double runs. Both middle school, high school as two runs and K5 is two runs to get those kids home and reduce the number of students on the bus. We're using vans to take some segments of kids off to take a little bit of pressure off of ridership in some of our more crowded buses. In our van, and when they use a van, they don't need a CDL license. So some of our, our monitors and other people can do that. They've been using drivers, substitute drivers from other yards, if they have any available. And using our mechanics and dispatchers and other folks who are properly conditioned to drive. As fill in when we are short drivers. So it's, it's super challenging. We, you know, I'm sad to report, but we have a neighboring school district who is canceling school tomorrow because they don't have enough bus drivers. It's not because of COVID in their district, it's not because of not having enough staff to teach school. They don't have a way to get their kids to school. So this, this is a huge issue. There's a state, I want to say it's Wisconsin, but I may have it wrong, that has brought the National Guard in. To start providing bus drivers to get them through this. We, there's a district in Lewis County has reached out and made a request to see what it would take to have that happen in our area. So we really are trying to be creative in, in problem solving this really complex. Problem that is not a Rochester School District exclusive issue. We're all competing together, trying to get our bus driving positions filled.
Kim, this is Neil. It's Massachusetts.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I was going to ask, how could the parents, anybody else in on this Zoom meeting tonight, reach out to the governor? Because I really see this as a statewide problem. Too many kids on the buses, the possibility of COVID infections is there. We really need to keep the kids separated. If we can keep them separated at school, we really need to keep them separated on the bus. And I really think that the National Guard should probably be called in. How should we contact the governor or should we be contacting OPSI? I know you have a lot more contacts with people than I do, but I, I see this as a big problem and it's a nationwide issue. Thank you.
That would be a governor's office request as opposed to a SPI. And I will double check, but I believe the contact information for the governor is still on the school district website under the board section. So I'll just verify that before the end of the meeting and, and make sure to ask me before we get done. And so this is our open positions and, and kind of the impact of some of those on our system. Our food service is also, has a few openings. They're not having a problem meeting their requirements or fulfilling our needs. And based on their shortages at this point, their greater concern is the instability of food supply. So we continue to always have food for kids, but they don't have as many options every day as we've had in the past. Just, we feed them what we can get them in, you know, what we have available to be able to feed them. So we, they put on the menu what they think they're going to get. And then there are often changes to what food is actually available from week to week. So we, we do, we're deviating from what is posted on the menu far more frequently than we have ever have in the past. The other thing I wanted to bring you up to speed on is vaccination status. So as a Washington State, State School District, we are required to have our employees vaccinated or go through the exemption process. So 272 employees, we have 79% that we anticipate to be fully vaccinated. And the, there's just maybe 10% of these people who are in process still. They haven't completed it, but have identified or indicated that they will be by the deadline. We have 19% of our employees who are anticipated to receive an exemption. By far and away, the majority of those already have and we're working through the accommodations process. What other precautions we're going to be putting in place, including weekly testing for. Folks that have exemptions, what are the additional PPE, things like that? Those are all based on the specific job roles that our employees have. So for example, somebody who works closely with students will have a different level of accommodations that they'll have to comply with. As opposed to somebody who works all outside all day as a groundskeeper. And there's different levels of risk in terms of their exposure to other people within our system. And so about 19%, that seems to be on average with what I'm hearing from other school districts. 20, 20 to 22% is, seems to be very common right now. And then we're anticipating up to six employees who will leave our system. Because they choose not to, don't feel they, they qualify for an exemption and choose not to be vaccinated. So we have six people in this category. There, I would say that there are four people of those six that they just have not communicated with us. So we've made multiple attempts to ask them their status and our, it's, it's radio silent. So we continue to, to reach out to them and ask what their status is. So for, for right now, those people that have had no contact with us on this subject have been put into this category. Hopefully they will end up in one of these other categories and they will, they'll continue on with us. So those are the staffing update slides that I have for you. Any questions about either of those or anything else staffing related?
Kim, on the reasonable accommodation, is that being done district by district? Or is that a? Are we consistent across the county schools in terms of reasonable accommodations?
And our accommodations are, we're working with the county health officer to identify what are those accommodations she feels are most appropriate based on job category? Again, how public facing the work, their work is. And then some guidance from LNI. As well. But in the end, it's it's up to each district to use that guidance in to apply it. But I'm hearing a lot of consistency from district to district around what the likely accommodations will be for people within certain job categories.
Yeah, I I know a lot of this is being left to local business or local health entities and agencies to do on their own. So it's good to see that there's some consistency across the schools. So thank you.
You are welcome. Other questions?
Kim, this is Neil. Now, the 2% that haven't reached out to you or made contact, have you contacted the unions if they're in the unions? So they have representation that is speaking for them, or at least it's being acknowledged to their people that they're members of?
So we're having communication. I mean, the unions and I are working closely on this process. I have not supplied them the names yet of those individuals who we have not heard from. So we haven't gotten down to that point yet. So we're, we're still trying to reach out and have individualized conversations with folks. Our next. So we'll continue one more time to to have a reach out. And then we'll ask our principals to reach out and remind them that HR needs to talk with them. And what will continue down that road. But we have not provided the the individual names to the union at this point.
Thanks, Kim.
You are welcome.
I understand that Erica Studeman has been able to join us. So if we could bump back to item 6B, the National FFA Convention?
Yeah, sorry about that, guys. We
No worries.
Missed a link in a notice and we're a little bit behind. We have, I guess I'll start with, is there any questions? Or do you want me to start with an overview of our plans?
Overview would be good.
Okay, sounds good. And we have four students planning to attend with us with two advisors. Three of the students are last year's seniors who, this is their final FFA event and missed two years of state conventions, national conventions. So this is kind of their last chance to get to do any of these things that they worked for in all of the four years that they were here. One of our students is our current FFA president, who is also our district three president. So FFA has broke up into districts throughout the state. She's our district president and has plans to run for state office this coming spring. And so those are our four students planning to go. Sarah Syke and myself are planning to go as the two advisors with them. The one of the reasons we're taking two advisors with four kids is one of our students is a life skills transition student that we feel needs some extra support and an extra person to be able to accommodate those needs and just have the supervision we feel necessary. We will be flying into Nashville, Tennessee on Saturday, October 23rd, and flying out of Indianapolis, Indiana following convention Saturday, October 30th. In that time, they're going to tour the agriculture industries in Nashville, in Louisville, Louisville, Kentucky, and then in Indianapolis, Indiana. And those are all supported locations. If you look on the nationals page, those are supported locations. So we have plans to go to Churchill Downs and Louisville Slugger. All of the places that we are planning to go are requiring masks. Convention is requiring masks. They'll attend leadership workshops and industry tours once we get to Indianapolis. I had shared a full schedule, but I don't have that up in front of me. I could pull it up, but then I have to like hide the Zoom because I don't have both screens. So that makes
I think we have, we have it on our
Perfect, because I was like, I have a full itinerary and I can go through almost every single thing if you want me to. But I think you have it.
We do.
And so I guess from that, I would ask for any questions you have or clarifications that you would like.
Thank you. Question, and maybe question I have, it sounds like you've got good ratio of advisors and adults with with kids. These have all already been procured tickets and everything else. Do we have plans, backup plans or acknowledgement from parents? You know, if there's an issue, the COVID related issue, and if somebody can't get on a plane to come back on schedule, how do, how do we deal with that? Or do we, have we thought about that or families?
So, yeah, we have the benefit of having two advisors there. And our ratio of students is three females to one male. So in order to make that happen, we have three hotel rooms. So we have an advisor room, a female room and a male room, which gives us the ability, if we need to shuffle and quarantine anybody while we're there, we can shuffle rooms and put some of those female, some of those three females in the advisor room so that we can quarantine as needed. The one male student obviously has his own room already, so that makes that easy in terms of quarantining there. And then there has been a little bit of discussion with parents, not a ton in terms of what does that look like in terms of getting on planes and getting back if there's a problem? I would say that our advisor plan with that would be, again, we have two advisors. So one advisor would stay with that student until either A, the parent got there, or B, we were able to transport home. The other advisor and the remaining students would come home as planned.
Thank you. Michael, Neil, any questions?
This is Neil. I would like to say thank you for allowing the the post-graduated opportunity to go and attend this event. The kids that have graduated over the last two years have gone through a lot of struggles. And for them to have an opportunity, that is a blessing. Say thank you.
We appreciate that, and that's a big deal to us, too. It's kind of crushed us. We spend so much time and effort in with these kids. So to watch, and especially this group of kids, actually had quite a few trips planned for the spring and summer that COVID shut down. Like, this group was like, no, we're doing chapter exchanges. And they were like, right, almost to the point for asking for approval to like, do a chapter exchange to Iowa. And they had big goals of like, we want to get to the point that we're doing the FFA international trips, right? As COVID was like, nope, you're done with all of it. So this group of kids was like, set and raring to go come 2020. And then it was just like, you're done. And so we're excited that they're doing nationals in person. And that's why despite the like, oh, we're still not out of COVID. But they're doing nationals in person, and this is this kid's last chance.
Thank you. Sorry, Michael, did you have some?
No, I was, I think I've had full disclosure on this. My daughter's one that's going, went to the parent night. They spent probably, it seemed like about eight hours, but I think tried to determine their itinerary and every direction you could imagine. So they're really pumped up about it. And it is a little bit of a trepidation time since we're still in this. And I think we just watch it day by day, but they're pretty jacked up to go for sure.
Erica, thank you very much for for taking the time to walk us through this. I don't know that we, we've already approved this trip. So I appreciate the additional information and in detail, knowing kind of where we are and how things have evolved over the last six, eight weeks. I don't think we need to take any other action other than, you know, wishing you all good luck and and have a great time and glad you're able to do it.
All right, thank you. We appreciate that in us, too, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll jump down to our last item. An old business, WASDA Annual Conference, Conference Update?
So WASDA is deciding that they are going to have a hybrid opportunity. So initially, we all signed up to be present at the WASDA conference in November. And this year it's being held in Bellevue. That is still an option, should you choose to continue with that. But you also have a chance to say, I would like to change my mind and I would like to attend virtually in in place of onsite. So there is a deadline of October 15th to switch. I believe that Shauna had sent out an email or some type of notification to you saying, if there's any way you'd be able to share with her tonight, whether you plan to stay attending in person or whether you would like to move to the virtual option, that would be appreciated. If you, if you can't make that determination tonight, we do have a little bit more time to work with. But if there's anybody who wants to go on, you know, I already know I need to to change or I want to stay. Please feel free to to speak up tonight. Otherwise, we need to be in contact with Shauna before the 15th.
Thank you. Shauna, I would, I still plan to attend in person. Hope that's an option. Nope, did I freeze up?
Donna, this is Neil. I'm still undecided now. But I'll let you know soon.
John, this is Michael. I, at this point in time, I'd still attend in person as well. Certainly, the dynamics of all this stuff changes, you know, day to day, it seems, but certainly week to week. So if things were to be as they are now, I would, I would attend in person.
Okay, thank you. So next items, moving on to new business. Highly capable plan, Maggie?
Yeah, Maggie is here tonight.
All right. I am here tonight, out of the shadows. So I I know it's been, it's been a long night, so I'm going to just give you, give you the highlights. How about that? I think you have the plan, which is really essentially a copy of the I grant that I submit to the state regarding highly capable. Part of the legislation that defines highly capable is that our plan be approved by the board every year. So every September, you you know that I'm going to come and talk to you about this. And the the things on the plan that I I want to highlight are, and I'm going to pull this up for me, are are just a couple of the changes. So it's on page four of the grant, but I'm going to tell you what page that is in Real Pages. And that is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna is where it talks about the continuum of services. And so that's actually on page 12 of the document, which talks about the different services that we offer. You may have remembered that in the spring, we approved, you approved the hiring of Kathleen Casper, who is a two-day-a-week highly capable teacher. And this has allowed us to add some additional programs into our highly capable, highly capable class, for, allowed us to add some additional programs for our highly capable students. And that is identified on on that page, which is programs that are unique to highly capable students. And that's where you would see a supplemental pullout program. So once a week, Kathleen is pulling out students K through five. We don't have any kindergarten students, so it's really first through five to to provide just additional enrichment activities to work on them on individual student interests, problem solving, and different units that can extend things that they're learning in the classroom. We are also able to provide one-on-one check-ins with our high school students. This is a new service that we've never offered before. So minimum quarterly, which is just kind of a check-in for for our students in the HICAP program. By that time, most of our students are either deep into their honors or advanced place classes or are doing ready and start. So this is an opportunity just to make sure that things are going well, start talking to them about their postgraduate goals. Or, yeah, are they looking at colleges, scholarship opportunities, those types of things? So Kathleen is doing all of that in just the two days that she's with us every week. The other change, I shouldn't say change, the other thing I would call your attention to is on page 20, which just talks about, it's the other thing that really changes for Mutear. And that's just our estimate of our students that we serve. We are at 154 students. We're estimating that we will serve this year, which is around 6% to 7% of our student population. So we're right within that state average or state recommendation of number of students in the highly capable program. So I'll answer any questions, but like I said, it's every year we fill something out and I apologize for this cat. He was quiet all, all time, all the time.
That's how that works. Thank you, Maggie. Questions for Maggie? Now, I really appreciate the overview. So I would make a motion that we approve the capable program plan as presented. For your second?
Neil, I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Maggie. All right, our next item is contracts to renewals. The one with the SD 113 Audiology Services and Thurston County Sheriff's SRO Agreement.
Yes, so what they have in common is that there is not a rate increase on either one of these contracts. And the audiologist services contract is hourly as needed. According to the IEPs that we have in place in a given year for the students that need those services. And so there can be some fluctuation in the total bill at the end of the year, but the rate per hour is the same. So I mean, I'll talk about both, and then we need a separate vote on them. The Thurston County Sheriff's Office SRO Agreement. Lots of changes to that to reflect the new requirements of legislation that was passed in the last session. So they provided a lot of additional requirements to ensure that there's clarity within the agreement that the the SRO is in, is not to ever take the role of the disciplinarian of the school, that they provide supplemental services that clarifies when they can take action in a school setting in an emergency, et cetera. But it more clearly delineates the role of administrator and school discipline versus law enforcement and not wanting those two to encroach on one another. There's also additional requirements for reporting. At the end of each year, additional requirements for the record keeping that SROs provide a variety of different enhancements to that agreement, again, that were a direct result of new legislation that was passed. So no rate changes, but a lot of new language.
Any questions about that one? If not, I've moved that we approve the the contract with Thurston County Sheriff's Office SRO Agreement.
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Contract approved.
And so we'll need approval for the audiologist services as well.
This is Neil. I will move to approve the renewal of the agreement with the SD 113.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor, say aye. Contract approved. All right, so our last item in new business expenditures. Analog clocks and student desks.
That would be mine. This is what I'm asking for. So, hey, the clocks at the high school, there's 75 clocks that need to get replaced at the high school. Many of them are 32 years old. And guess what?
Motors on clocks don't last forever. So what we're looking at is, and there's also what those clocks that are there are wired. And some of the wires are not sending a signal anymore. So. I I went out and I looked at three or four different companies, got got some bids. This is the bid that that came in was the lowest and and it also has the system that's gonna 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 work best. It is something that we will be able to move around because their wifi, that we can put in wherever we want. So they are battery operated. Seven to ten year in the battery operation of those. And so we'll also get a cool R logo on the clock as well for that for that low, low price. So, so yes, they're analog, but what I'm trying to do is replace the same, cover up the same size hole. That's already there on the wall is why I went, had to go with an analog. All right. So just so you know. So that's what I'm asking for. Questions?
I think we still need to learn how to tell time the old fashioned way, right? That's good, too. I think you already said that, yeah, the wifi is, they will all sync to a central.
Yep.
Time, so. Will help too. Good, all right. Any questions? I would, do we need to do these one at a time? So I would move to approve the expenditure for analog clocks. Do I hear a second?
This is Neil. I'll second.
Thank you, Neil. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Expenditure approved.
The high school staff will love you guys. Let me tell you, they just want to go to tell time and they should be here in about three or four weeks, too. So they're actually in stock. So. Grant, you want me to talk about the next one since that's mine, too?
Please.
All right, so you'll see the the next one is expenditure for student desk. It is for the for the high school. What we're, what we're finding with classes, they are in need of more desks so we can change out some tables. To make sure that we're we're ensuring the distancing that we should should be having within classrooms. So. There is a hundred desks there. They are similar, or actually they're the same as the ones that we that we got last year. So. There the 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 learn fit desk that move up and down and and whatnot. And they already have plenty of chairs, so.
Perfect. Any questions on this item?
I'll move that we purchase the student desk.
All right, are you second?
This is Neil. I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. expenditure approved. I see three others on here, don't have attachments associated with it, but you've got the descriptions. You want to move through those?
And if you don't mind, Ed is is still here and. He he can speak to each of these, even though the van is not necessarily for Ed's department. He. Has been. Always on lookout for helping us to fulfill these needs and other departments. So Ed, can you speak to this?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Yeah, the. First one, the eighteen thousand one hundred is for a two thousand thirteen Ford E three fifty van. With twenty-seven thousand miles on it. It's a, it's a good deal. It's something that's well below market value and in desperate need. It's a one ton van. For hauling students and equipment and currently the vans that we have both have over a hundred thousand miles on them and they're half ton vans. And that's a big difference when it comes to hauling kids and stability and whatnot.
Great, good find. Any, any questions on that one?
How many passengers that Ed?
It's it's actually a four seat. It's a three row plus the driver and passenger. But I think we can only legally haul nine students and nine passengers in a van. So we'll actually just give us a little bit more room taking the backseat out and. Right now, we're, we've got so many things going on. We've got the football team using the cargo trailer hauling things and so it's it's desperately needed.
If there are any other questions, I hear motion to approve the van purchase.
So move.
Thank you, Neil. Or sorry, thank you, Michael.
Well, I'll second that. I had to shut off my video. Everything just stopped on my screen again, so I apologize. Every now and then I bop in and out of some of these meetings, just trying to keep. Hearing what's going on correctly, so.
No, no worries. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, van procurement is approved. Next item is a fence.
Yeah, the next one is eleven thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars is for a fence that will connect to. The property adjacent to us and cover the road frontage all the way up to the rock. Kevin Wilson came to me the other day with some concerns because people are, they're so familiar with just driving around the rock. When we have the gate shut and come into the property, you know, we've had lawn jobs and football, practice football field, thank goodness. Jobs that people have done things and so this will secure that along with the. Added property usage of that trail that we put in there. People are really liking that. It just helps secure that area a little bit so that. People access that trail from the appropriate point, not coming through that old homestead place up front.
Great, thanks, Ed. Any questions on that? Not, I would move to approve the. Fence as described for eleven thousand forty-five. For your second.
Neil, I'll second that.
Thanks, Neil. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, approved. And then one more fence.
Yeah, the the last one is the fifteen thousand one hundred forty-seven is the fence between the maintenance shop. The the back of the maintenance shop, the the west furthest property line of the school district to the elementary school. That's a very unsecure fence line. There's, there's two or three different kinds of fence intertangled there that none of them are doing any security. That's also the area right now that we have all the parents bringing, dropping kids off, picking kids up. It's, it's not a very appealing. Look for our school right now and it's the last section on that property to secure that west property line of the school district property.
Great.
It'll be a six foot chain link fence, the same as the rest of it through there.
Yeah, nice. Any questions?
I I do have a question on this one, Grant, and it's just my own. Are we just buying the fence for this amount or does this include installation or does your staff install these?
No, this is total installation. My staff will will clean the property line. You know, cut the property line, remove the old fence, because it's bob wire and it's a really. Hodgepodge what's what's on that property line right now. And but then, no, that's the, that's them materials and installation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll move, Grant. If we already didn't do it, I would move that we approve the last expenditure here for the fence.
Thanks, Michael.
Yeah. This is Neil. I will second that motion, but I did have a question. Are all of these items available with all the shortages that have been taking place? I mean, everyone wants the money upfront. Sure, we'll hook you up with that, but when it comes down to the nitty gritty and coming out and doing the work, they could have shortages.
Yeah, no, this, all these materials for this product are available, you know, within the normal timeframe. This is a six foot fence, so it's a totally acquirable products. You know, you start getting into eight foot fence and stuff like that, or or the five foot fence now materials are kind of hard, but. No, this is, everything should be off the shelf.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. So we had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, expenditure approved. I think that covers all those, right? Did we miss any? Good, okay. That brings us to the end of our scheduled agenda. We have besides the opportunity for public input. So Justin, if you've gotten any.
I have not, I do not have anybody on the list for a public input.
Okay, let's give it, let's give it a minute. And if anybody has any. Desire to give some public input, please put your name and email in the chat. Justin will see that. And we'll be able to call on you. So we'll give it, give it a minute.
Still no one, Grant. We're good.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will adjourn.